All right. Welcome, everyone. Call our council meeting to order if we can please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Allbritton?
President.
Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Councilmember Kozinski?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Great, thank you. If you'll please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Do we need a motion to excuse, Gary?
Yes, please.
Motion to excuse?
Second.
Third.
All right, we have a motion and a second. To excuse Councilmember Jablonsky, if you please call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allbritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Very good. All right. Before we get started, I wanted to just take a moment, have a moment of silence. We've lost a couple of ranchers that have been here for many years and been part of really the formation of this town, and two of them Denise Hoteling and Curtis Epps. So if you please join me in a moment of silence, appreciate it. Great, thank you very much. All right. Do we have any public comment this evening? We do have one.
We have one, David Sears.
David Sears, 5501 Malaluka. I don't know if you guys know what transpired on Monday evening around nine o'clock, but a call came in for a fire at the Assad's residence. I'm sad to be a resident of Southwest Ranches not to see our fire chief nor the volunteer fire department, fire guys over there helping. Davy sent everybody there except, with the exception, of two fire engines. Davy stepped up and did what they're paid to do. We pay the volunteer fire department to do what they're supposed to do, and they didn't show up. There needs to be consequences. Something needs to be done. You guys up there allow us to have the volunteers. We give them a lot of money. They got air packs just like Davy does. There was firefighters from the volunteers that got the call on their phones and showed up to see what they could do to help. Mr. Kozinski drove by and asked what was going on because he heard about it. That's great for him to do something like that because that's where his house lives. It's where he's a part of it. So something needs to be done. Somebody needs to be held accountable because everybody has a radio. I did my own investigating, and the rumor has it that, oh, well, 112 probably didn't get the call. 112 was pumping the well because the wells for the city water for Cooper City were never turned on. So we do the well inspections, Davy does the well inspections, and that worked. Whoever inspected the city water for Assad's residence, they didn't have that well turned on. So there needs to be some accountability to this. It's sad. It's sad. And I support the volunteer fire department every Christmas. But for them not to go out there, and then I was told that they're not allowed to come over, they stop in one of the 112 zones and they don't come over into the Sunshine Ranches area, then I don't want to pay for their services for them to be out there. We spend a lot of money to do stuff like this, and they needed to be there, and they weren't. Thank you.
Thank you, David. That's it, all right. All right. Any board reports this evening? Seeing none, councilmember comments?
Where's Gary? Where's Gary?
All right, I'll go ahead and go. I got a short one. Thank everybody for coming out this evening. I'm not going to go into the traffic reports. I'm going to do that next meeting. That's the law and order report with all the citations I put out every month. But I did want to talk about something that I learned, that Davy has a program, and maybe it's something our residents may be interested in, where the people that have motor vehicles can take their vehicle in for, I guess, an inspection or a registration, but they actually put an ID mark on the catalytic converters because there's, as well-known that there's a lot of catalytic converter thefts. But Davy has a program where you actually can put a number on the catalytic converter and it's registered. Then if it's stolen, it comes up somewhere, then it can be traced to the owner and all the procedures with the legal matters with that. Something that sounds interesting that maybe we can do because we have a lot more trucks than, percentage-wise, than Davy does. And then there's been some discussion about moving some of our code issues from reactive to proactive. And one of the issues that I find very concerning to me, that I think is important to me, is I don't want, I will not give a code carte blanche to walk onto anybody's property just to take a look, to see if there's a code violation. I just want to preserve private property rights for our residents because that's what we live for here in Southwest Ranches. That wraps up my comments.
Thank you, David. I'd like to go next. Jim?
Mayor, I'll go. I'll be very brief. I think the residents have heard that the speed sign on 166 has been relocated. There was a miscommunication as to where it went, and it's been relocated. And it's in now working, correct? Tom? Yeah, it's in working?
Yes.
Yeah, I think George Morris got it put in, right? So I haven't seen where it was at.
One, yeah, it's on 185, right?
It's on.
186, it's 186.
186, on 186, right. I haven't seen where the new location was, but where they originally put it, it was facing the wrong way or so. So it's been moved and changed. I attended the Broward County Water Board Advisory Meeting here this past week, and they talked about the resiliency program for water, for the flooding out here. I guess some of y'all have seen that the governor signed $380, $400 million bill, and I understand that's for 71 projects or so, coastal flooding and inland flooding. I want you to understand that the $400 million would buy four pumps. The pumps are $82 million apiece. We need 32 pumps, 32 pumps, in South Palm Beach, Broward, and North Dade to do what would take the flooding away. That would take 15 years to build. They don't have that kind of money. So what he's doing with this, to divide that 71 up, Broward's going to fight and get every penny they can get, but I guarantee you, it won't be enough to help us out here, which is a shame. So we'll see what happens with that. And then lastly, I want to, well, not lastly, but we have a photo contest with the Arts Board. The thing is beauty in the ranches. They'd like you to take a picture with your phones, with your cameras and all, and turn those in. I think a lot of y'all have seen the town calendars. A whole page tells who took the picture. If you're chosen, you can be on that calendar. So anything in the ranches that's beautiful, anything that you like that's beautiful in the ranches, you and your kids holding baby chickens, it doesn't, I mean, just turn it in, and let's see if we can't get a bunch of pictures in and make this a good calendar. And then lastly, it's been hot out there. I think everybody knows that the feels like temperatures reach 109, 110 degrees. I myself was out there today. I stayed out till about 2:00. I love the heat. Born and raised here, but I will tell you today, it got me. I had to go in the shower and stand there for a few minutes and recuperate. So if you're outside, drink plenty of water. Make sure you got a hat on. Stay cool. Wear light-colored, long-sleeved shirts, and heat exhaustion sets in, go in and sit down. Don't try to fight it. It'll put you down because the next thing that comes is heat stroke. Heat stroke will kill you. So with that, that's all I got to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jim.
I just got a quick comment. Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for doing the moments of silence. I was going to do the same thing during my comments. I did want to bring something up to the council, and I'm sorry Gary's not here, but we all got notified by Andy of Broward Water Leaders Academy. You also got a note from Senator Geller on this. I went to the first one 14, 15 years ago when I was chair of the Drainage Committee, and I've gone since then, I think this will be three times after that. I went two years ago. I've been going every other now. They do it every two years. Now, the reason I'm bringing this up is a lot of the projects you're talking about, Jim, a lot of the projects we talk about around the county and really around the state are all impacted by the Broward Water Resiliency Council, which I know you're part of, Jim. It's very interesting because the first time I went, we didn't have a lot of infrastructure other than the big sea canals that go east-west. A lot of infrastructure's been built over the last 15 years. For example, it doesn't impact us, but most of the cities on the east side that are having problems with saltwater intrusion invested in a project that is taking water now from Lake Okeechobee, storing it in a reservoir up just north, just northwest of Line Country Safari, and then it'll send it down to us by either the New River to, it depends on where they want to send the water, but this infrastructure wasn't there six years ago. It's all been built out because of the problems we're having with water here. They go through all the county projects, what's been accomplished in the last two years. The people that are involved in this are Broward's best and brightest when it comes to managing our environment. Dr. Janet Girardo heads it up. She's in charge of Broward's resiliency organization. And then Greg Mount is her chief on this, and he puts this whole thing together. It's four sessions. Usually the first one and the last one are actually inside. The rest are trips out to see what's going on throughout our county. It's well worth the time, so I'd encourage you to get involved. And I'd even encourage George to get involved if he were here on time. I'll talk to you later, George, about what I just mentioned because it makes sense for you to go as well. Other than that, thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Bob. Appreciate it. I'll be brief as well. I just have one topic that I wanted to touch on. As you know, we are kind of, we're organizing to be able to understand and respond to the potential of having a waste-to-energy plant in the unincorporated Broward County that's nearby us. And administration has been a big help to set up meetings. I've now met with several of the mayors here in Broward County. It's interesting to get everybody's take on it, and they are, certainly they're informed about it, but I think there's a lot of elements of what we have come to realize that, I'll say, are, really have not been explored by some of the other municipalities. And so I've been really pleased at really how the meetings have gone so far and the progress that I think we've been able to make in kind of building some common understandings and some common thoughts on potentially how to proceed, and just kind of building the relationships that hopefully we will draw on later when we need some particular action. And so, so far, so good. I will say that there have been some municipalities that have been not interested in meeting, which is frankly pretty interesting in and of itself. That's also a communication. And so we're also taking that into account and trying to understand how best to kind of maneuver and the best plan going forward. So things are definitely underway. We are building, you know, our understanding and our relationships with the communities around us to try and work together a good plan. This is going to be over the next 18 months, so it's not anything's going to happen. So this is kind of building the foundation, the ground floor for what we'll continue to do down the line. The only other thing I wanted to really touch on, David, appreciate your comments. So the, just briefly, we have, we have a full-service fire station at Volunteer and Sterling. We have an adaptive fire service out west, and that's the primary reason why we have the volunteer fire department out there is because when, because of the adaptive, when they go out on a call, there's no coverage on the west side. And so we did specifically request that they stay on the west side because we know that Davy will be called in a lot of different directions, and if some emergency were to happen on the west side when they are elsewhere, then that could have extremely serious consequences. And so we have, we have particularly, specifically asked them to stay on the west side, and that's why they stayed where they, you know, were directed to stay. And, and so, so that's the explanation of why it was done, what it was done. So.
They're not allowed to do any work. They're there to assist. So if you have a medical response, they can't be there for medical response.
No, that's not true. That's not true. That's not true at all. That's not true at all. They absolutely do, do a medical response. They are basic, not advanced, but they are basic. They can, they, they, they do the basic to get the patient prepped if it's required until they have some, one of the other services show up. So absolutely, they do, do the basic life support requirements to get the patient stabilized till the other team arrives, so. All right.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, over here. Hi. When you had your meeting with various mayors, I'm kind of interested in this. The nearest by municipalities, can you share with us what mayors are on board?
Sure. Yeah, so I met with the mayor of Weston, went really well, Weston and a couple of their administrators, really well. I thought it was a great exchange back and forth. And the interesting thing with Weston was that I really feel like they were just resigned to the fact that it was, things were going to go the way they were going to go. And I think when we got done, we had a great conversation where we really talked about some options that I think maybe it won't go the way, you know, really. We also had a great conversation with the mayor of Miramar, and he brought his full staff. We walked in there, the three of us, Andy Russell and myself, to a full room. It was like, I was like, all right, I feel a little intimidated here at first, but they were all super nice, and they all listened intently, and I think we had a great exchange there as well. So, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for taking that effort. Thank you for leading that.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. So I know, Richard, Mary Ann, I see you're here. We're actually past public comment, but I know you're here to speak, so I'm just going to give you a little bit of time because we want to hear what you've found and kind of your findings. So if it's okay with you, I'll give you the floor here for the next few minutes.
Thank you. So we had a very interesting Saturday. We were invited to a summit of the climate justice where they're taking our recommendations to Davos and the UN. And councilmember David Kozinski made an all-out effort to represent the town of Southwest Ranches. So your ideas are going to Davos, to the UN. David was extremely helpful in bringing up many good points about the overdevelopment, our water situation, and we had quite an interesting two-hour meeting, didn't we, David?
Yes, yes.
You might want to talk about that also if you get a chance. So what I wanted to say about the incinerators, trash incinerators, there's no such thing as a good incinerator. And I'm not sure if you have the video. It's just a quick five-minute.
Yeah, Mary Ann, I think we'll.
We can do it another time.
Yeah.
That's perfectly fine. So what we found out was the EPA has no teeth when it comes to enforcing. So when they give you assurances that, oh, don't worry, we check the ash to make sure it's not toxic, constantly. You know what constantly is? Once every, well, let's see, four times a year would be once every three months, right? Now, they give notice to the incinerator company, hey, we're coming. So what does the incinerator company do? They treat the ash with hydrochloric acid, they clean it up, they aerate it, and bingo, guess what? It passes. Also, the testing was changed so that now the pH has changed on the test so that the toxins don't leach out, and they guarantee that they pass. So just remember that whatever guarantees the government gives you, they will always break them, okay? And we don't want to be in the position where our residents have cancer, asthma, and all kinds of problems because we're going to live with this incinerator for 40 years. Thank you. Richard?
Hi, good evening. First of all, I just would like to welcome our residents Carolina Rodriguez and Anthony Martinez. They're here tonight because we met a couple of weeks ago when they came to buy eggs from me, and I informed them about the waste-to-energy, the proposed waste-to-energy plant that they're looking at building over in the Broward County landfill. And they became very interested and started asking questions, so I provided them with email updates and stuff like that. Now, I've been, Mary Ann and I have been pretty busy organizing, leading and organizing the effort to create a grassroots community effort here. The name of our group is Broward Clean Air for Residents. It's not an option. It's all right. And we're working very closely with Mikey Wall, who is an expert on trash incineration. He's helped over the past 30 years 270 groups in the country fight and help shut down trash incinerators. So we have been working very closely with him, and he's an excellent resource for us, and I think hopefully maybe for the county and for the municipalities to get some good information about how dangerous trash incinerators, incinerators are for the air, land, and water, especially the wetlands and the Florida Everglades. So I, a couple of interesting things happened over the last few weeks. I've been contacted by the Mikusuki Tribe of Indians Fish and Wildlife Director as well as their general counsel, and they are very concerned about contamination because they have leased lands in Water Conservation 3A, and they want to get together with us to see if we can create some synergy to bring about some change in the direction that this may be going in. We also found out recently that the South Broward Wheelbrader, that there's been some land clearing to expand the ash.
The toxic ash dispersment.
Yes. And this, you want to talk about the wetlands, where they may be impacting the wetlands?
The area that we're talking about is known as Pond Apple, and it is a wetland that connects to the Everglades. When they built 595, it impacted part of that wetland and its connection to the ocean at the time. But here, they're building over the most pristine water conservation area, pure water there, and they're bulldozing the area. One of our people involved with our committees saw them from 595, and she called the Broward County Mayor and his administrator, what's going on? What do you mean, what's going on? First of all, they didn't know if anything was going on there. But we're concerned because if that water gets contaminated under the Pond Apple, that comes directly to us and goes to the Everglades. So we could potentially be contaminated from any spillage from the ash that's going to be dumped there. So apparently this, we don't know if they have permits. We don't know when they got permits, or even if they're allowed to do this. So we don't want to say anything that we don't know for sure, but we are now, David contacted the FDIP to make sure that they were allowed to do this. He's contacting the US Army Corps for the Waters of the USA, which are going to be impacted, and we need to really, really monitor this because it will affect us.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I contacted the FDIP, the new administrator up in West Palm Beach, and I've, I spoke to him yesterday. He's not aware of any permitting that has been given to them. So that's something that has to be looked into because the FDIP, Department of Agriculture, US Department of Agriculture have to oversee the, this process. And if they don't have the wetland permits, ERPs and Section 404 approvals to clear land and impact waters of the United States, there could be a lot of problems coming forward to them. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Appreciate the update. All right, legal comments.
No, Mayor, sorry. I was looking up the Pond Apple project as to where it's located exactly. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. In keeping with the theme tonight, you were talking about the meetings that we had with Weston and Miramar, and I can tell you that the Weston meeting that we had last week has already borne fruit. On Tuesday evening, Russell and I received an email from the Assistant City Manager in Weston advising us about the TAC Committee, Technical Advisory Committee, had a meeting yesterday. And so it was held via Zoom, and because Russell and I got that on Tuesday, we were able to attend that meeting. So Russell's going to serve as our liaison to that group, and he's got a report that I'd like to flip it to him to give that report out to you.
Great.
But had we not had that meeting in Weston, we would not have known about that meeting.
Right.
So thank you for that.
Yeah, and I know we're working to get on the email list so that we will get all the notifications, yeah. Go ahead, Russell.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and just to that point, we are actually on that email list now.
Okay, good.
So that's taking place, yeah, now. Exactly. So as Andy alluded to, we did attend the virtual meeting of this Solid Waste Working Group Technical Advisory Committee on Wednesday, and they went over a few things. One was the brief overview of the county's procurement process because there's a lot of obviously procurement activities that are going to take place as far as this is concerned. First and foremost is the development of a scope of work and the acquisition of a consultant to provide the master plan that will, that will need to take place first. So they talked about that process. They did allude to a document that we were not aware of until just attending this, this meeting yesterday, I'm sorry, yeah, Wednesday. And that is a draft scope of work that was actually delivered to the county back in December of last year, but we're just now seeing this for the very first time. So within that scope of work, it alludes to a lot of different things, and I will provide copies of that information to the council. The scope of work addresses compliance with regulatory requirements concerning emissions, but what's interesting is it does not appear to contemplate vigorous, independent monitoring, nor does it specifically mention zero-waste initiatives. So we found that interesting. The scope also specifically mentions expanding the current waste-to-energy site or the possibility of building a new one at the same location or other reasonable, quote-unquote, reasonable alternatives. So we're curious to know what reasonable alternatives are. Talks about the utilization of a valuation committee that will be appointed by the county. And within that evaluation committee, they will use certain criteria such as the ability, the approach, the past performance, workload, location, et cetera, for this consultant to develop this master plan. The timeline to develop the master plan, once it's awarded, is six to 12 months after award, but they're still looking to, you know, basically put this document together. So we're several months away from them even putting that out. And once award takes place, you're looking at another six to 12 months. So we could potentially be at about two years before this master plan is even completed. The draft scope also has an attachment to it that talks about estimated facility construction costs. And what was interesting to see was the county's estimates for these potential construction costs associated with these alternatives. And one of them was a brand-new waste-to-energy plant, which they estimate could take five years to complete at a cost of over $1 billion, billion with a B. One of the other options was the expansion of the current waste-to-energy site, the wind site, which is formerly known as the Wheelbrader Site on 441, by adding a fourth boiler to it at a cost of $250 million, taking four years to complete. And then other aspects of a, you know, a solid waste authority system, including the single-stream recycling facility, which would come in at a cost of about $70 million and take about four years to complete, trash transfer stations at $30 million, which would take about three years to complete, a bulk waste yard trash and CND facility also for three, taking about three years to complete at a cost of about $50 million, and a yard trash facility taking about three years and costing approximately $10 million. So very significant costs associated with these endeavors.
Russell, excuse me, before you go on, they're intending on building all of those or these are options?
These are different options.
Okay.
These are different options.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Regarding the Technical Advisory Committee, it's composed of members appointed currently by by each of the municipalities. But as we came, came to find out yesterday, the, the original technical advisory committee's duration or term has come to fruition already. It's basically ended its run. So there'll need to be a reappointment of those technical advisory committee members. They contemplate that it will be essentially the same thing that has been done before where a municipality will appoint a member to that, the technical advisory committee. So that'll be something for the council to consider in the future, just so you're aware. So we'll be bringing something back about that. We're having an issue. Okay. As far as the technical advisory committee, yesterday during the, the meeting, there was also provision for citizen input. So I thought that was obviously something that, that we would want to see, but it was limited. It was very limited. So the technical advisory committee members were allowed to speak and vote on issues. Obviously, the public was allowed to have some comment, but it was very limited. In fact, it was limited to two minutes. The new version of the technical advisory committee, as I mentioned, will require town council appointees typically at the staff level. At that meeting yesterday with the public input that was received, we did hear from two concerned residents who voiced environmental concerns, including the need for zero-waste solutions to be included in any kind of master plan. And again, that was not initially listed. There was also an industry professional that was present, and he wanted to ensure that, that their industry was included in the master plan, and that was somebody from the composting council. I've even heard of such a thing, so it was interesting to hear that there is such a thing. And certainly, they, they want to have a seat at the table, so that, that was good to hear that they have, they had that. So that's basically my notes from the meeting. We do plan on reporting back every time there is a, a meeting of the technical advisory committee, so I'll have a report back for you every single time.
That's great. Could you, could you, I don't know if you got those typed up?
Yeah, I do.
Or something you can distribute out to the council?
I will.
Okay.
Certainly. And I will also provide you with the, the draft of the, of the master plan scope board.
Awesome. Great. Thank you. Appreciate you jumping in and doing that. All right. Okay. All right. Item number eight, resolution?
All right. This is the resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, opposing, opposing any effort by Broward County to place any waste-to-energy plants, plant or plants adjacent to or nearby the municipal boundaries of Southwest Ranches and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item?
Just what looks like a scrupulous error on the fourth where is, fifth where is. It seems like it should say waste-to-energy plant, like to be consistent with the rest. It just says any WTE on property adjacent to.
Hmm.
Trivial. Here, I'll show you on my tablet.
Yeah, okay.
Right there.
Yeah, okay.
Good catch.
We'll add it. Right.
We'll add it. Otherwise, it's great, Keith. No, it's Russell. I didn't do this. Whoever wrote it. Sorry, Russell. Russell did.
Okay, not a problem.
Great job, Russell.
So is this a motion to approve, subject to making that, subject to making that change?
We agree to make.
Correct, correct. I'll amend my motion.
Okay. All right. Is there any public comment on this item?
Can I get my phone real quick?
Yeah. All right. Sorry, Noel. Sorry. All right. Seeing none, public comment closed. If we can please vote on the item.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Just one other comment on this. Once, well, we just passed it. I'd like to see this go out to all municipalities in Broward County, all the county commissioners. I think the school board should know about this as well because I'd really love to see at some point, school kids drawing pictures of waste, you know, recycling methods.
Right.
I'd like to see as much community support Broward-wide as we can get on this.
Right, right.
So that is, that should see.
Yeah, that is part of the, the actual resolution, is to distribute it out.
Oh.
Very good.
I read that, but.
Yeah. I don't think the school board's in there, but that's a great idea.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but all the municipalities in Broward County, it's all in there. So, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Item number nine is the minutes. Do we have any adjustments or corrections to the minutes from May 25th, from either the workshop or the regular meeting? Do we have a motion, actually?
Make a motion.
Second.
Great. Do we have any adjustments, corrections to the minutes? Seeing none. Any adjustments or corrections from the public? Seeing none. If we can please call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.